Good shape, the big crowd. All right. Laura? Kind of like that move that we put in the agenda with the following amendments. First, additional certified and classified personnel actions, item E3, and also add item K2, an executive session pertaining to negotiations for the purpose of discussing those negotiations because of the matter we're discussing of consulting on by jeopardized resolution of the negotiation issues and that the Board of Education reconvene after that. Motion by Laura. Second by Alex. Any discussion? All those in favor, say "one more even hand." Motion carries. Awesome. Under public comments, we have Shay Sinclair here to speak about Live Well, Fannie County. Welcome Shay.
Thank you. Good evening. I understand that we're recognized in the school board this evening for your service to our community, so I'd like to say thank you for your service. My name is Shay Sinclair. I'm the director of the Western Kansas Community Foundation here in town, and I'm part of a coalition called Live Well, Fannie County. This is a grant that we administer and work with many community organizations, including US457. We are here, I am here along with Polly Witt, who serves on the committee as well, to invite the school board to an event that we're holding. We are bringing a nationally known speaker, his name is Mark Fenton, to our community in early February, and we would like for, as many of the school board members and community members, to try and take advantage of an opportunity to listen to him speak. He is a passionate advocate about building healthier communities which include walkable, bikeable, opportunities to take public transportation, which have more than just health benefits, lots of economic benefits, and quality of life benefits for our community. I think it will definitely be time well spent if we can get a couple of hours of your time. Specifically, we're hosting a dinner on Monday, February 2nd, for elected officials. And so, we're inviting, of course, all of our elected officials in Fannie County, including Polkham, to join us, to meet privately, actually publicly, with Mark Fenton, so we can learn about what a walkable, bikeable community means. And of course, that has a lot of impact on kids that walk to school every day. We certainly want to encourage that because it builds healthier kids, and it builds healthier communities too. So, if you have any questions, there's a lot of information that Polly has handed out, of course, the invitations, and you're welcome to call me, or Polly, or anyone on our committee, and we'd love you to join us in early February. Thank you.
Shay, while you're here, we'd like to turn around and invite you to our Community Wellness Day, which is April 19.
Okay.
That's the topic. Yes, a little bit more time to prepare. Polly, you're aware of that, right?
Yes.
Through our wellness committee, which Polly is deeply involved in, and Tracy Johnson, I spoke with her earlier today, and she supports the district-wide wellness approach to health and fitness. So, we appreciate the proactive approach to wellness. This community is really poised to do a lot of good in this area. You know, we've got amazing opportunities with the Tally Trail just to get started. But we also have a need here, and we've got a great community that embraces positive change. So, appreciate what you're doing Shay, and thanks for coming.
Thank you for the invitation.
All right. We are ready for, thanks to Shay's introduction here, a transition for recognition of the School Board of Education members.
We have the Mayor of Garden City with us this evening. I see a few of the public information that he has shown to recognize you as a Board of Education this evening.
Well, from the Mayor of Garden City, I'd like to speak to you for your volunteerism and helping to support the community and make Garden City a better place, not only for children, but for the community as a whole. I did receive a proclamation from the Governor that I'm going to read to you. It states, "To the people of Kansas, greetings. Whereas the Kansas Constitution entrusts maintenance, development, and operation of the state's public education system to the locally elected school board, and whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and prepare all children for future success, and whereas the members of Kansas Public School Boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve by providing leadership to inspire the achievement of all students, and whereas the men and women elected to serve on local school board devote hundreds of hours of volunteer time to the governance of local public education system, and whereas the local school board members are accountable to their local community for accomplishing the mission for public education in Kansas. Now therefore, I, Sam Brownback, Governor of the State of Kansas, do hereby recognize January 2015 as the School Board Member Recognition Month in Kansas, and call upon all citizens to join in recognizing the dedication and commitment of local school board members, and to furthermore, join them in working for a public education system that meets the needs of our children today and in the future, done at the Capitol in Topeka, under the great seal of the state this 19th day of December 2014, by the Governor, Sam Brownback."
Thank you Laura.
Congratulations. And we do have a certificate that we'd like to present to you this evening, in recognition of School Board Month from Garden City Public Schools. I'll present each one of you with a certificate. I'll start with Tom. Of course, they're in alphabetical order, so.
Get some more steps in.
Congratulations, yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
The next item of business is our building presentation for Charles O. Stone's Janet. Oh, we're scrolling over here. We have another screen. Well, that's, they have that screen guys.
First of all, we'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share some great things that are going on in our building. And again, thank you for coming out in November, and I think two or three of you came out and listened to our staff, and met with them, and that was really a neat opportunity for them to have that. Congratulations on board, this being the month for celebrating our Board of Education. We brought several staff members with us today to present to you some things that we think are doing, we're doing well in our building. We have really focused on three areas, family engagement, really working with those children who are at risk, and also some of our after-school activities that we're offering kids, and we wanted to share some of those things with you. So, I'm going to let my staff introduce themselves.
I'm Maria Santos. I'm with the Family Engagement Committee.
I'm Catherine Alcompan. I'm also with the Family Engagement Committee.
I'm Andy Sova. I'm a sixth grade communications teacher.
I'm Brian Elliott. I teach band at Charles Stone's.
I'm Claire Schreiner. I teach orchestra at Charles Stone's.
Crystal Simon. I'm the math coach at Charles Stone's.
I'm DeSoto. I'm the literacy coach at Charles Stone's.
Christina Whitley. I'm a sixth grade teacher at Charles Stone's, and also the site coordinator for Big Brothers, Big Sisters After School Program.
Hi, I'm Pinky Gile. The Associate Principal at Charles Stone's.
I'm Kristi Hubbard. The art teacher, and I work with the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I'm also on the Family Engagement.
I'm going to let the Family Engagement people start.
With the Family Engagement, we've attended a few of the meetings with the State Department, and taken from some of the suggestions that they have made, and come up with our own as well. For parent-teacher conferences, we're expected to have 90% of parent contact with our parents. And that's either trying to make that 90%, if they don't come in, we try to make phone calls, we set up appointments, otherwise, we are just trying to make that 90% contact. Our parent-teacher organization meetings were moved to noon, and that has increased the participation. We're getting information to parents about what's going on at Charles Stone's, either with tri-fold, or we're having all kinds of family engagement nights, where the kids come in, and you can see in the photos, they create things, and teachers, parents and teachers working together to try to get these new Common Core strategies to the parents.
And we also host Freddy's Nights. We have another one coming up Monday, the 26th. So, I know many of you already have Monday and Tuesdays, where this is an golden opportunity to meet once again. But it gives both our staff and other parents and our students a chance to just interact because they require only two or three staff members to come, and we normally, for an hour shift, have between 6:00 and 9:00. So, we have a very active participation with our staff, and it gives us a chance to go around to the tables and talk with parents and kids as well.
We're having positive contacts between the teachers and parents, as is expected. Teachers are, we have purchased postcards so that we can make, catch the kids, not only doing good things, going above and beyond. So, whenever we catch the kids, we send them a postcard and let parents know, trying to make, make it not only negative contact of that we just contacted parents when their kids are not doing, but also when they are doing things that are expected. We're using our emails, we're using phone calls to notify parents when their child's are caught being good. Also, we're using the Sky Alert a lot to, and we really like that because we can just generalize, get everybody, and make general comments about, this is what's going on at school, this is, you know, a great opportunity for you guys to come in and welcome people to our school.
And we have a strong emphasis on positive role models. So, we've been trying to bring in people from the outside community and things, so that these students can see people that have succeeded in school, and how your education can be a positive experience. The Dodge City Law football players have come twice already, and boy, those kids just light up. There's just, they're running to get their signatures and everything, so that's been fun. We had a former student come in who turned his life around and became a Marine, and was talking about self-discipline, and being a good student, and how that can affect you in your long-term life. And now, we're in the process, as a family engagement team, of trying to re-establish a program very, kind of similar to what they had called the Watchdog Program in the past.
We are having tri-fold sent out with just very good education information for parents. The last, we do those once a month, and the last few that we have sent, I know, was like engaging yourself in your child's school, how to become members, how to become a partner with your, with your school and your child's education. Also, another one was like discipline at home. So, trying to get good information to parents, and then also, oh, the movie night. We've been having movie night, and that's not really engagement, but it's also just a welcoming parents, making them feel comfortable in to come into our school. And we've seen a lot of positive with that. We've seen our numbers grow, and it's just a fun time to come and share popcorn at our school, and they get to socialize with us, and any profits we make from things that we do fundraising, go to our field trips.
And finally, we've been inviting our parents to come in so that they understand the new expectations of Common Core. And so, we've had family reading night, as well as family math nights, to help them understand. I'm sure Crystal will share a little bit more about the Engage New York Nights, but we've helped them to understand why we're doing aims testing, why we need to increase the fluency, why it's important that our students are able to be stronger problem solvers. And so, those nights are a great opportunity. When we're having those nights, we not only show those parents how to do the activities with the students, but we also often give them charts, they're numbered, so the other parents have no idea which score belongs to any other child but their own. But they can see how they compare to other kids in the class, and that gives them motivation to increase, or they give them a good pat on the back if they're top. As well as, our community partner in education is Black Hills, and they have been fabulous to work with. They will come out almost any time we ask them, they'll come out and cook hot dogs, and they have just been fabulous organization to partner with, and we're grateful for them as well.
Our Engage New York Night, we did one the end of September, beginning of October, and we separated our fifth and sixth grade because there's a huge break between the way Engage New York is set up, between K through V, and then sixth through eighth, so it's a totally different way. So, we did them separate, and we invited parents to come in with their children, and we talked about, we went on, September, October, we talked about what Common Core was, and a little bit about Engage New York, and then we hit the first two modules that the students were going to be working on. So, we showed parents sample problems that were coming up, and how they could help their students with those problems. That was the biggest complaint we had at the beginning of the year, that parents felt like they didn't have what they needed to help their kids at home. So, that's where we geared the night towards, was to give parents these resources and these example activities, and we went over several of the models that were, you know, new, and just kind of gave parents that background knowledge that they would need. We also sent home, you can kind of see in there manipulatives that the kids would need for the first two modules. So, fifth and sixth grade both got like fraction tiles, and then a timer to work on fluency, and then fifth grade got place value math, so those were neat. So, in our first one, we had 75 families represented for fifth grade and 57 for sixth grade, which was, it was a really awesome turnout. We were able to split Spanish and English, so their instruction was in their language as well, it was very successful. We're actually going to do another one February 3rd, where we'll go over the next two modules coming up, so four and five. So, we're in the process of working on those, and we're hoping that we just as successful.
The reading night, we had, we, parents checked in, and we gave them a graph, and we found their student, circled it for them, so they knew where their student was, and they also got a packet to take home that has, sorry, crayons, the directions of how to work with their student on fluency, and the fluency passages, and they got crayons so they could chart it, and they practiced. We had talked about what fluency was, and then we had a video that showed how to do this, and then they had time to practice and ask questions on doing this with their students. And we had approximately 57 families come that night, so it was, it was a success, and we split Spanish and English, and we videoed it to teach them in Spanish. So, actually Christina volunteered to do that, and so, they were taught in both, you could hear it in both languages, so. We do interventions, we do walk interventions first thing in the morning. All students attend a Tier One or Tier Two interventions, and it's 30 minutes. The Tier One, they do more enrichment activities, IXL, reading activities, they're doing some kite building and some sewing, where they have to read directions and measure, so they're using those math and reading skills. And there's art projects, and those groups are about 24 to 25 students now, so.
They're growing.
They're growing, which is a good thing for our Tier Two.
I'm sorry, what's IXL?
It's a math computer program, and it works at the students' level.
Can I go in through 12?
Okay, sorry. I learned that one.
If students are below the level in reading or math, they attend a Tier Two. In reading, we're primarily working, focusing on fluency and phonics right now, so that's what they're, they're working on. We use Read Naturally, Quick Reads, Blitz, and then there's some other phonics programs that we're using.
And then in math, we're doing, do the math intervention, which is a Maryland burns, it breaks down addition, subtraction, multiplication, or division, so the kids take pre-tests and figure out which module they need to be at, in, and they get instruction based on that. So, it just really breaks it down, gives the kids strategies on how to solve those problems, just a basic foundational knowledge, and then the kids work their way through those, like on to the next module, so they're continually growing and progressing.
And we do have a few select students that are attending a CHAMP's Leadership Intervention. They're having social issues in class, or just need to figure out how to be better students, and so, we have eight students in there right now. And they meet for 30 minutes, and that's their intervention. And they also meet 30 minutes. Tier Three interventions, they're pulled from an enrichment class for one or two semesters. There's no more than five kids in the group. In reading, they're working on phonics and decoding, fluency, and comprehension. We've seen a lot of success with these students. They've been more successful in the classroom, they're feel better about themselves because they can work better, and we have two teachers doing that. They have, so we have like 12 different sections of that a day. And they don't, we don't have any complaints about them missing enrichment, so.
In math, we have one and a half enrichmentists. So, we've got, yeah, about, equal to 20, but, so we've kind of based it around what reading's done. Our lower level, really struggling kids, miss an enrichment and go to their tier math. And in that, they really do a lot of pre-teaching, like what's coming, they look at what's coming up in Engage New York, and really hit those, where they know those kids are going to have holes to help them be more successful in the classroom. So, they do a lot of pre-teaching, they work on fluency, just helping those kids, give those kids those supports so they can be successful in classrooms, it's Engage New York most of the time.
This is our aims web data. You can see last year, the reading in the fall, to the reading in the fall for the proficient students. We made great gains last year, and they retained it over the summer, which was, we're at 50% or above on our grade levels, on both Mays and our CBM. And our below level, we started the year at 32, or last year at 32, this year we started at 25, and our at-risk, our CBM was 15%, and then 21% in Mays. So, we just started our benchmark this week, so we're anxious to get those numbers and see the increase.
Math is the same way. We started our assessments this week, so we'll be able to compare fall to winter. Right now, we have fall to fall. So, our proficient, which is our green grew, which is what we want, and then our at-risk and our below level decreased, which is exactly what we want, so that's fifth grade.
And the sixth grade, and we also were 52, or 50% or more proficient in sixth grade, so the numbers are about the same in the below and the at-risk, but we're very happy at the end of the year to start off that high. We've never started off that high before, so it's exciting.
And then our sixth grade math.
Yeah.
Sorry. Our sixth grade math did not look as well. It decreased here, it increased here, which is definitely not what we want. So, we've looked at, how do we address this? We get our new benchmark assessments this week, so we're hoping we can compare fall to winter, and that increases. But we've also looked at how we pull them for Tier Three, if they receive a Tier Three intervention, a Tier Two intervention for reading, and they're also in like a Read 180. We've looked at, is there, you know, is it possible that we can pull them for that group for math? So, we've kind of, so they get some instruction in math too, instead of all just reading. So, we've kind of.
Is that part of the transition to Engage New York? Just the stresses from going to.
Well, I know last year, we did that transitional curriculum, is that what it was called again? So, I don't know if that, you know, just kind of everybody was kind of pulling from different places. I don't, I don't know if that affected that or not. I think, I'm really excited to see our winter benchmark, because we can see where they started, and we've done Engage New York for five months, this is where they're at, you know, hoping we see great gains, because we'll be comparing the same curriculum both times, so.
And you can see with our reading, how much our at-risk has dropped. We're trying to have them at the same, the same program with math. We are short-staffed this year, so that's kind of, we've had to back off.
I'm sorry for that.
You know, it's nobody's fault but our staff.
I know, but I'm still sorry.
These guys have been amazing. They have stepped up to the plate and filled in all the gaps, and I really haven't heard a lot of complaining if they're doing it, it's not in front of me.
Plus, last year, we did, we started playing it back, and we went to, from fourth grade to trying to fill in some of those gaps, which as this year, we started right at fifth grade and right at level.
They were background building, so I know you guys did a lot of fourth grade modules and things like that, and I'm sure they've hit their levels, so I'm excited. I think we'll see great success this week, hopefully.
We're excited we're going forward. After-school programs. Oh, I guess we didn't have any of this slide. Okay. These are a lot of our after-school programs that we have. The first couple are going to actually talk to you, but we also wanted to bring in, we do have Trio La Raza, our La Raza Club is very active, and we have all sorts of tutoring, and we have teachers who are doing that for free. We impacted or implemented this year Zero Tolerance for Homework, which you can't see down there. We learned that at the Model Schools Conference. So, we've asked our teachers to try and make sure everybody does their homework, no excuses. And so, and I noticed a couple of ladies sitting up here who stay one night a week, and make their kids stay after school and do homework, because they didn't get their homework done. So, we're trying to make sure every kid has to do all of the work. We're not 100% successful, this is our first year, but that really came out big at the Model School Conference.
If it's important enough to assign it, it's important enough to grade it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, my name's Christina Whitley, and I'm the site coordinator for the Big Brothers, Big Sisters After School Program. I'm very proud of our program, I have to say, first off, and I'm very proud of the staff members that we have working in our program. We have four certified teachers. We have Ms. Hubbard, Ms. Sova, Ms. Sova, and Ms. Festmeyer, and myself, obviously. We also have students that come from Garden City Community College and help, and volunteer in our program as well. We take a holistic approach to the success of our children. We have four main areas that we work on. First off is snack and circle up. So, it's, we have a snack, and we talk, and we try to build bonds between our students, and just build a really positive peer and school environment. Our second area is health and movement. We have, on different days, it's Mondays this week, or this year, but we have our Ms. Hornbeck, who is one of our PE teachers of their school, put together different activities for a student, along with, every day, we have just different physical activities before we go, before or after our enrichment, depending on who's coming in to provide the enrichment. Another area is enrichment. We have people that come in, and there's a list up here, we have a lot of wonderful people from this community come in, the Lee Richardson Zoo, the Historical Society. This year, we were lucky to have Friends of the Sand Sage Bison Range come in and talk with us, and the Extension Office, America Reads, and it just goes on. And we have some people that obviously aren't listed on here, because we have a lot of people that are really caring for this community, that when they're asked to come in and do a presentation, they come in and they're excited to do it, and our kids are excited to just listen and learn. And lastly, tutoring. Going along with the philosophy of our school and our ideas, and promoting a positive academic learning environment as well, many of the times, students on Tuesdays and Thursdays kind of struggle with math. So, we have certified teachers there that can help them with their math and help explain it. So, not only are they finishing their homework, but they're growing in their understanding, their learning. So, they get that extra little nudge, and that helps their positiveness and their self-confidence, because the next day, they're not the kid that's always like, I don't have my homework because I didn't understand how to do it, or I didn't have anybody to show me how. So, our, the effects of our program have been substantial and positive, and it's just shown in academic improvement, increase of confidence, school and, school pride, and also pride within themselves. Parent involvement, once every semester, we have something that's called Lights On After School, and that's where the kids put together the program that they're going to present to their parents, of what they've done, or it's, it's different semester to semester. Like, this past semester, we went ahead and they put, the kids put together a PowerPoint. So, we're implementing technology that they've learned in Ms. Peterson's class, who's our computer teacher, and they're applying with their knowledge, their real-life knowledge, into something substantial that they can show their parents. And they also got to prepare all the snacks for their parents, so they definitely there, were there to show up and eat it.
We're seeing such proud kids.
Yes, they were really excited about that. So, our, our parent turnout was exceptional. We were very happy, considering we could just plan for one room, it was just, just one regular classroom, and it was standing room only. So, we have a lot of eager parents that are wanting to participate, and wanting to come in, and not only have our school as, as a place they have their kids, but as, as a community center as well. center as well.
The next thing that we have on our, with this CSIC Robotics Club, our leader for this club is actually Mrs. Strabinski and she was not able to come tonight, so I am presenting on it as best as I can. It's, it's usually held Tuesdays and Thursdays and we hold it in the CSIC library. She said that there were about 30 kids that actually participate and so since there were so many, she asked them to choose a night so they could either come on Tuesday night or Thursday night so they could all actively participate. It's always exciting to see them sitting in the hallway waiting to go into the library until she's ready. Some of the activities that they had available are building video games and interactive animations. So you'll see them working on the computer. She'll often be rolling in a computer cart for them to use. Computer programming and coding. They make mousetrap race cars, microcontroller projects and other science labs. They actually have a Facebook page, CSIC Robotics, so they have videos on there. They work with the High School Robotics Club too. They brought over their drone that they have and they were able to fly that. One day as well, I was looking through all the pictures, kind of exciting stuff. Students had the opportunity to try out many different engaging aspects of science. So they're not just doing those regular science experiments, they're able to try things. They are able to choose the activities that interest them. If they want to participate in it, they can, or they can try one of the other ones that are available. And I thought this one was one of the best phrases on there. They were encouraged to make mistakes, but to also problem solve on their own. Kids these days struggle making a mistake and trying to find that problem. And so knowing that they're able to do that in kind of an interactive way was really beneficial. So I'm really excited that we have this available at our school.
After-school on Tuesdays, I do jazz band with sixth graders only and it's, it's just for students to, to get a little bit of experience in jazz, it's the very, very, most basic level that I can have those students do. Like it says up there, I have about 10 students and there's a couple of them that come after choir. Choir goes until 4:30 at Charles Stones and I go, I take the jazz band up until 5 o'clock. So they come in with me at about 4:30 and have about 30 minutes of jazz experience. The jazz band also performed first on our concert at the school and before the fifth grade band started, so it was really successful there. On Thursdays, I give band lessons for free to any fifth or sixth graders that want to come in. I have anywhere from a handful to about 20 students, so I kind of spread them around the stage and if Big Brothers, Big Sisters aren't in the gym there, then I'll, I'll use that area too if I have overflow. But I just work my way around with the students and, and work with them a little bit and, and try to get around a couple of times to them. Some students work on solos, some make up assignments and tests or, or stuff like that. Others just work out of their book and want to get a little bit more advanced in their, in their music. And also, Tom Richel's not here, not to be, he can't be here tonight because he has a medical appointment out of town, but he teaches choir after school every day at Charles Stones. And fifth and sixth graders, has approximately 35 students. Right now, they're working on a lot of music from Frozen and, and stuff that's more popular around this time. And for myself and Ms. Shreiner and, and him, we're working towards, going on tour, touring some of the elementary schools to recruit for our program for next year. So we do that tour in April. I was very happy with, with our program that we had in late December there. We had, I don't know, what is it, 500 or so chairs set up? And basically every, every space that's available in the, in the gym there, we, we set up a chair and we had to go, Janet had to go up on stage and ask a couple of times for custodians and, and students and staff to grab more chairs because we had so many people at the concert. So it was really gratifying knowing that the families were there to support their children and I was very proud of that, proud of that moment.
The orchestra students and parents are very active. This, this year, as it says, I've started up lessons with the high school students coming to tutor one-on-one with some smaller kids, the fifth and sixth graders. Anyone can show up, it's on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We did that for maybe two weeks last semester and a lot of students showed up. Not just high school, but a lot of Charles Stone students. So I was very excited. I didn't think anywhere, but a lot of them did, so I was, I was really excited. And we're going to pick it up this semester because I've had a lot of kids request it. The, weird, my numbers have, you know, blown up. I'm so excited. I mean, I've only lost like three kids this semester. Yay. And then our concert, we did very, very well as, as well. The sixth graders played a lower high school level piece and they were successful. So I mean, pushing sixth graders, beginning kids to play a high school level piece, that's just unreal and that's what all of our spring concert is, is high school level music. And they can play it, which I'm, I'm really excited. And our fifth graders, they're doing very well too. They're up to about a sixth grade, sixth grade level. So I'm just, I push my kids and they react well to it and they're just really good kids. I, I don't know what else to say. I'm sorry.
I know this will hurt your feelings. That's kind of our presentation showing you some of the things we're doing outside the general core classroom. We just wanted to highlight some of those other things that we do for kids. So thank you for your time and for the good questions.
I thoroughly enjoyed your staff meeting and I don't get too emotional on staff meetings, but yours I was, hands down. The passion and excitement that you guys have for education is, is amazing. I like how you guys don't bury your heads in sand. You deal with, with issues that are affecting your school and your students and hit them head on. I love your parent engagement piece and the committee is awesome. You know, I was watching the news this evening before I came here and we have in Wichita, parents picketing outside of school, parents supporting teachers. Did anyone else see this? There was a problem, I guess there was a lockdown at a school and the parents weren't notified and the breakdown was at administration level and the parents were standing up to support the teachers in their building. And that part's great and you guys are definitely developing relationships there. So every time you hear something like that, you're like, that's, that couldn't be us, right? We're doing better than that, we're doing this right. So it was great to hear your parent piece because I like that relationship. I do hope you feel supported by administration because we definitely feel like we're supporting you and if not, we need to know about it. I like to hear stuff that you brought back from the Mom School Conference that's still coming around. We're still talking about things that we've taken away from that, so money will spend, my opinion. Yeah. So keep it up. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Thanks.
Any correspondence to attention? Can we bring on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve this consent agenda as a review.
Version by Laura, second by Tom, in discussion. All those in favor? Okay, we are ready for curriculum reports. Mr. Morales, are you on?
No, I'm not. We're all observed. Here's the structure. We've got some seemingly disparate topics here, but I want to, I'm going to provide a little overview and then turn it over to the schools to talk about their individual graduation rate and where they are. And then we'll conclude with a discussion of iPads and, and hopefully tie that all together. I want to share with you graduation rate over time. Many of you will recall that in 2009, the state informed us that they were changing the way that they were calculating our graduation rate. Prior to that time, we, using the old formula, we were at 77.6%, I believe was our official rate. And that year, we were concerned because under the new formula, we dropped pretty significantly down to 62.9% overall for the district. But this is a, this is a positive tale. This is a tale of continuous progress and improvement. If you look throughout the history here of our district numbers, our graduation rate as a district this year is 80.8%. The state benchmark is 80%, so we're above it now for the second year in a row and we continue to make progress. Absolutely. I also pulled out several of our major subgroups. And again, not every single case, but in most cases, progress every single year. So Hispanic, although we dropped a little bit this year, the trend has definitely been good. White, ELL, special ed, special ed I want to signal out for their incredible growth. ELL as well, migrant, 20 points in the last five years, very well.
I have a quick question. Is the sample size for each year the same?
No, it's not. It's whatever the graduating class is, so it'll be similar, but it won't be identical. So these are percentages. Subgroups and this, these are the number of graduates. In USD 457, last year officially, we had 420 graduates, which is up more than 50, more than 60 actually, from five years ago. And when you go back to when Mr. Morales took over the building, how many did you have your first year?
About 300.
About 300. So we're up 120 over the last decade. And again, you look at the subgroups and ELL went from 45 to 131. That, I, I think is pretty amazing. Here's the, here's the, the same information represented in a graph. This is the percentage, not the total number. But we're narrowing that achievement gap. We're narrowing the gap between majority and minority students in terms of their graduation rate. Each of those is on a positive trajectory, some, some more so than others, but very, very positive that, you can see the little line there, the benchmark's at 80% and we've got several now who cross that line.
Dr. Dennis, the students from the Alternative Center are mixed in, they're subgrouped?
Yes. Yes, this is district-wide. And actually, the next chart I want to show you breaks it down. So Garden City High School, their official four-year grade, four-year rate is 88.2%, which is an incredible number. We also get a five-year rate. They calculate that as well and their rate was 85.4, well, again, well above the benchmark. I have tried to calculate, Mr. Ru, we've, we've kind of talked about this, based on the old formula, if we were comparing apples to apples back into 2008. And by my estimation, unofficial, but I, my best guess is we'd be about 91.5% according to the old formula. As you get closer to 100%, there isn't as much spread as there, as there might be when you're lower. Alternative High School, I want to put some context in, I know Mr. Ron's going to try to give you some context for this as well. Their four-year graduation rate is a little bit lower, but his population of students is made up of people who in general have not been successful in the, the traditional curriculum. So we would expect that number to be a little bit lower. This is also the first year that we have had a separate graduation rate for the alternative program. In the past, it has been really a subunit officially of Garden City High School and that's no longer the case.